Twenty twenty four. Please join the board in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format consistent with modifications made to the open meeting law by the legislature of the Commonwealth. We have members of the board joining us physically in person here at the great hall at Town Hall. Members of the public may be joining us in person at the great hall here at Town Hall or over the Zoom webinar platform. The Zoom login information is contained on the agenda that is posted on the town website. Members of the public may also watch the meeting on Comcast Channel nine or Verizon Channel forty seven. And then, members that are in physical attendance are reminded that consistent with the laws of the Commonwealth, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair, subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair, so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. The only recording we are aware of is that of PAC TV, which is, of course, broadcasting this consistent with the earlier announcements. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Canty. First out of our business is a transfer of stock, change of offices, and change of manager from Ride Tavern Corporation, five seventeen Old Sandwich Road. Ellis Withington, manager, holder of annual all alcohol restaurant license. In accordance with chapter one thirty eight of the Massachusetts general laws as amended, notices hereby given in a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, at six P. M. to consider the application for a transfer of stock, change of offices, and change of manager from My Tavern Corporation, five seventeen Old Sandwich Road. Ellis Withington, manager, holder of annual all alcohol restaurant license. Description of premises is as follows. First floor and patio area, two entrances and exits for public on the first floor, one on the main entrance exit and one side entrance exit kitchen. Approximately four hundred and eighty-nine square foot. Bar and dining area approximately nine hundred and forty square feet and bathroom. Four hundred square foot of outside patio on the south side. Seven hundred and twenty square feet outside patio on the east side. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should plan to attend this meeting. I now declare this hearing as open. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Please come up to the mic, make sure the green light's on, and identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm Ellis Withington. I'm the owner of the Ride Tavern. I'm one of the founders from twenty eleven, and I had a little hiatus, and now I'm back. So, it's a place I'm very familiar with and have owned in the past.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? No one online, right? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? No one online? Pleasure with the board?
I have a question.
Question, Mr. Blitzer?
Mr. Withington? I just have a question. So, who currently, who is the manager as of today before you're taken over? Who's been managing?
For the restaurant?
So, I'm just trying to figure out, so you're taking back over ownership?
Yes.
So, who, who, you're transferring the stock, is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay, so from who to, who had the stock? Are you taking over a hundred percent of the stock?
Yeah. My niece and nephew owned it after I owned it, and I bought it back from them.
Right, so you bought it back from them? Okay, I was just trying, just trying to understand that. So, it's a great place. I was just, just trying to figure that out, so anyway. All right, good luck, how's business?
Well, it's, it's like the weather.
Yeah.
If it's good, it's good. If it's not, I'm going to the bank with money going the other way.
There you go, all right, good luck. It's not easy.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, favor of the board?
Make a motion to approve the transfer of stock, change of officers, and change of manager?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer, discussion? Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous, thank you. Any questions on the administrative notes? If there isn't, there's nine of them. Take them as a group unless the board otherwise requests different.
If my colleagues have no questions or comments, I would make a motion to take the administrative notes, one through nine, as a group.
I can second those, that motion.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer, discussion? Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. First agenda item, Water Street Sewer Interceptor, Apicheck presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the membership, I am Commissioner Jared Valenzuela, Chair, and it is a pleasure to be before you folks for what I believe will be the last time. Plymouth has now become, I believe, the ninth community in Plymouth County to max out their ARPA allocation, municipal allocation. I do want to, before I just get into some brief remarks, just extend the regrets of Commissioner Hanley and Commissioner Wright that they couldn't be here, as well as Treasurer O'Brien. We've been very proud of this partnership with the Town of Plymouth, with Mr. Brindisi, with Lynn, and your entire team here. You have used, I believe, all of these funds for that project on Water Street. We found that that was the highest and best use of ARPA funding, was water and sewer infrastructure and taking care of those, those one-time expenditures. It has been a privilege to be able to work with the Town of Plymouth on these projects and continue that partnership. We have asked the member communities to commit those funds, the other member communities, to commit their funds by September thirtieth. As of now, they have indicated that they will be using all of their funding. However, should they not, much like what we did with the CARES Act, we will begin to reshuffle some of those funds as we maintain our promise to not return any money to the federal government. So, stay tuned, we could be back for one, but as of now, the town has reached their, their final allocation, which is, of course, one point six million dollars for that sewer interceptor on Water Street. Last but certainly not least, I do want to thank Representative Lonato, Representative Marotori, and Senator Moran. They've both been, I'm sorry, all three of them have been staunch advocates for the town, calling myself and calling, calling the Treasurer's office, and of course, to you folks as well. We've been very, very grateful for the partnership to be able to work with, with our host community, which is the Town of Plymouth. So, that is really all from me. Usually I go briefly when I'm flying solo, but I'm always happy to take questions if appropriate or comments. If not, we do have the big check, which now is a crease in the middle because it almost blew away at Nantasket Beach a couple of months ago. So, we are frugal with the county, so.
Okay, Mr. Canty?
So, in the event that other communities miss the deadline, how could we be in a good position to be near the front of the queue to drink from that trough?
So, we had requested, and I believe Plymouth did satisfy, that communities to still submit what they would use it on. So, I believe that we already have some items in the queue for the town, should those other towns not, so that the county can quickly pivot to awarding those funds.
Do you have or could you provide a estimated dollar figure? You don't have to do it now, but an estimated dollar amount so we know what we're, because we, we are a community with, as a recent resident, you'll find out yourself.
Yes.
We are a community of various and innumerable needs. So, we can certainly find places to spend this money if our other communities are better off.
I can tell you right now, as of now, that number is zero. Every town has indicated that they will use their allocation. So, right now, until we get to September thirtieth, that number will remain zero. Once we get to September thirtieth, we're confident that we will, will have a clear picture, and we will communicate that to Derek, to Mr. Brindisi, I'm sorry, and to the other member communities that have submitted above and beyond. Again, much like with CARES, we know that a lot of these communities that have put in likely won't follow through for a number of reasons.
Right.
And, you know, even before being a recent resident of Plymouth, which I'm happy to be here, I was aware Plymouth, Brockton, a lot of those, especially those two communities have a lot of needs that are vast that we could cover. We will cover those. Should we, if it's one dollar or a million dollars, we will make sure the communities that need it, of course Plymouth being one of the top ones, receive it.
So, how, how formal of a request would you want, would you want the board to be voting on a request, even if it's for this unaccounted for, possibly non-existent money, or would it just be?
It's already a submission. So, I believe communications have gotten out that a submission should have been made.
Okay.
To my knowledge, it already has been. So, it would follow the same rubric that's been followed to be awarded these funds, as well as other funds. It's just whatever request the Town of Plymouth makes between now and then will be held in abeyance pending the availability of funds.
Okay, so, Mr. Brindisi through the Chair. If we could look at our wish list and needs list to see what things we could put in this queue to get ahead of the game in case some of our neighboring slash competing communities don't follow through, I think that would probably be in our best interest.
Absolutely, and so we also did plan on having an ARPA presentation on the July ninth meeting. So, at that point, we'll talk more about the various projects. As you know, we probably have more projects in the queue than we have funding available. So, we'll present this to the board on July ninth as well.
Thank you.
And just to answer one more thing, Mr. Canty, we, there's, it wouldn't necessarily be competing with if whatever's left would be allocated equally based on population. So, much like the original allocation, whatever ends up being left over would be reallocated, again, based on whether a community submitted, but then it would also be population-based, which of course Plymouth, having the second largest population in the county, would have a significant portion of.
Thank you.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes, Commissioner Valenzuela, I just want to thank the county. Obviously, you're representing the county, but there's a lot of people involved, all the other commissioners, as well as the Treasurer, Mr. Bazler, the administrator. And as you can, as you know, our administration and we, Town Manager Brindisi, Assistant Manager Silvio Janelle, they spend, our monies are spent very wisely. We have a lot of projects, and the use of our ARPA money is, it's very, it's well-spent and properly spent. And, and I just want to thank you because that water interceptor was a huge project for us. And it, there was a couple of bumps, obviously, so it cost a lot more money. And thank God this ARPA money, and it was managed properly, that we had enough ARPA money to pay for this project so it didn't come out of the residential pockets. And that, and everybody out there that should know that, that that's, it was because of the management of that money. So, again, is, I want to thank you for all the residents in Plymouth for, for this money. It's, it's, like I said, it's appreciated, and we have other projects, and if there's money left, would be very appreciative of some more funding.
We'll be happy to. Yeah, and I'm glad you mentioned the staff. We are trending at one percent administrative costs, and I forgot to mention this in my opening remarks, so I appreciate you jogging my memory. Just to highlight that, the national average is seven to ten percent. You know, so on a hundred million dollars, we're spending roughly a million to administer this, and, and I know Derek and Silvio know, the, the compliance with this alone is, is an albatross. So, the fact that we're able to do that at one percent has meant more money for Plymouth and more money for the other member communities, again, where the national average is trending to seven to ten percent. And when we give you these, these dollars, we're not clawing them back, we're not coming back in six months to a year and saying, oops, we shouldn't have given you that. And that's an important thing for us that we'd like to highlight, and I'm glad you mentioned our staff, you know, Frank Bazler, Matt Hanley, again, Treasurer O'Brien, and my colleagues, because we're doing that to the betterment of Plymouth and to the member communities. And by doing that, it has meant more money for Plymouth, just as it did with the CARES Act, and it'll continue to mean more money through ARPA.
And the last thing I want to say is, I'm very familiar with how our counties run, and I am a supporter of county government, and I'm not afraid to say that publicly. So, again, for the Town of Plymouth, thank you very much for these funds.
Thank you.
Mr. Valenzuela, I'm gonna echo on behalf of the town. Thank you very much. I was very impressed at the way the county handled the distribution of those funds. I think he's done a great job, and I get to hear a lot of that at the budgetary meetings that I was also impressed at several weeks ago that we had there, and how you're handling your retirement, OPEB liability, and how you're paying that down. And I think it's ten years, it'll be right where it should be. I think that's what I heard.
Yeah.
So, I was very impressed with that also, and that's good outlook, you know, forward planning. That's what we're trying to do in Plymouth, we've been doing. So, I want to say thank you on behalf of the town, and we wouldn't have been able to do that project. And give you a little history about the project. It was at a Select Board meeting we were talking, and I happened to bring up at that time, it was the previous DPW Director. And I asked him, you know, I know it stopped down by the rotary, you know, what's the condition? And, you know, and naturally, if it was easy, it would have been finished. So, I mean, I already knew the answer before I asked. So, we actually set some projects aside, the previous board, and went right for that one because that one is very important, it ran through the harbor. We couldn't act, you know, check on it, we couldn't get cameras down there. There's a lot of things people don't know, and if that had failed or collapsed, that's to close down a Water Street. And that would be awful.
Right.
And then, you know, we'd be dummies and, you know, not planning. So, I'm glad we, we took that step out there, and it, there's been issues, there might even be one or two more. But at the end of the day, it's finished, and it's done, and it's done right. So, I'll, I'll take that all day long. And we've been shoring up the wastewater treatment facility there. The next project, I believe, through Derek, was the retention wall or whatever you want, the wall there. And so, we've been shoring up our waterfront, knowing climate change and everything else that goes with it. So, without you, we wouldn't have been able to do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate your, your membership on the Advisory Board, that's our legislative branch. And congratulations on getting on the Executive Committee there as well. We're very happy, and Mr. Quintil's been a staunch advocate for Plymouth since being on there. And we really do appreciate, you know, again, the partnership and the collaboration. You know, as, as a county official, certainly, you know, I can understand where some people might have some angst about our existence, but we've been here since sixteen eighty-five, and I think through this. And, you know, as, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we do some of the unfund things of government, talking about pre-funding your OPEB liability and paying down your retirement liability isn't fun, but Plymouth County is leading the way on that, as well as so many other, so many other programs. And I know that's not the notice item on the agenda, but we're always happy to come back and talk about some of those items and talk about other ways that Plymouth County can save the Town of Plymouth money.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so if it's appropriate, I do have the large and well-traveled check. If we could just do a quick picture, and I'll be on my way.
What's the next question? We're such a mean organization, how do you guys get to take the picture?
We're on a low budget.
Right, this is just a.
In photo.
As I say, this is just a prove out, it's here.
Assistant town deputy slash.
Next item up is the nuisance bylaw.
Hello there. So, I'm obviously Kevin Canty, Vice Chair of the Board, joined by Town Council Kate McKay. We are here to present to you the current status of a renewed effort to try and pass a nuisance bylaw for the Town of Plymouth. So, here we go. So, some history on the nuisance bylaw. So, people that were paying attention last fall will recall that at Fall Annual Town Meeting on October twenty first of last year, there was a proposed nuisance bylaw, it was Article five, it contained provisions related to buildings, overgrowth, graffiti, pools of stagnant water, et cetera. There was a lot of debate and discussion about it, its potential overreach, other issues that people had with some of the language that was contained therein. It was actually amended on ten-meeting floor not once but twice, once to remove an exemption for municipal property in a vote of one oh one to thirty to five, which was an interesting removal because the, the thrust of the bylaw was to give the town teeth to go after, go after is a strong term, but to have some enforcement authority to be able to do something about buildings that are in a dilapidated state that are creating fire hazards, nuisances, eyesores, those types of things. I think people watching or listening can think of one or more of those buildings in their community as to what they would be. But it was for private property. The town can already do stuff with municipal property, and the town, the, the bylaw was designed at that time to allow for like liens and fines, and the town isn't going to do that to itself. So, I thought that exemption, that removal of that exemption was somewhat odd. Nevertheless, it was approved by town meeting. Then we got to, there was another exemption that was passed by town meeting to amend the motion to exempt overgrowth provision that was contained at the time from applying to biodiversity and agricultural uses, that had a one hundred and twenty-one to fifteen to two vote, so that passed. And then the, the twice amended motion ended in failing. So, despite the amendments having tremendous support, the actual main motion as amended failed twenty-four to one fourteen to one. So, we have an uphill battle to pass a bylaw of this kind in Plymouth, and we have to be, I think, cognizant of that going into it, that we are facing some skepticism by the legislative branch and by some constituents at a minimum. So, with that in mind, we have elected to focus on the primary thrust of what that bylaw was intended to do as opposed to, I mean, a lot of the discussion last time was about the overgrowth part. There was also discussion about the graffiti part. But we really want to focus on specifically the buildings, because that's what we're getting a lot of discussion about and a lot of complaints about. What is the town doing about this building over here, that building over there, this building in my neighborhood, this building down by White Horse Beach that's been in this state for so long, et cetera, et cetera. So, that is what we are trying to focus on, and our hope is, if some of these other issues linger in the community, like overgrowth in the future, if we can demonstrate that we did a good job with the law as passed in its more scaled-back form, perhaps we would have earned more trust from our legislative branch to allow us to do those types of things. But we understand that it was kind of an over-ask at the last time, as demonstrated by the significant margin of defeat that the original article suffered. So, we are going to go through in detail at this particular hearing the language that is contained in the bylaw as it currently exists. This is going to be the first of multiple hearings. For the purpose, this is going to be a little dry, so I apologize for that, but, you know, that's, that's life sometimes. But getting the language out there and understanding the language, what it says, what it means, what it does, will be important to demonstrate what we are trying to do, what we are, and also conversely, what we are not trying to do, and open a dialogue so that when this does go to town meeting next time, we're in a better position to actually get it passed. So, let's start at the beginning, always a good place to start. That would be section one thirty-seven dash one, purpose and intent. Is the purpose and intent of this section to minimize nuisances in the municipality? Nuisances such as dilapidated buildings, structures, including fences, debris, trash, stagnant pools of water, property having defective weather protection and vacant or abandoned buildings, causing contribute to blight within neighborhoods and commercial areas of the municipality, and adversely affect the public health and safety. This bylaw is intended to further the objectives of and to act in concert with any existing state or local laws. So, to any, I think the, the most logical way to go through this, Mr. Chairman, unless you have a different opinion, would be to open it up if anybody has any questions, any given slide while the language is up there, and then, you know, I can move forward to the next one. And we can always go back if something triggers.
Okay, any questions?
Okay, so obviously, the purpose and intent is relatively straightforward and self, self-explaining. So, this is what we're looking to do, this is why we're looking to do it, public health and safety. So, then we get into one thirty-seven, section two. This is the first part of the definition section, so there will be more definitions on the next slide. Following words and phrases when used in this bylaw shall have the following meanings. Blighted premises, any building, structure, parcel of land, or any part of a building or structure that is a separate unit, whether commercial or residential, whether occupied or unoccupied, whether in foreclosure or not, in which at least one of the following conditions exist. A, the premises is not being adequately maintained and secured, as documented by the enforcement officer, as the term is defined therein. Based upon, without limitation, the following factors. Missing or boarded windows or doors, collapsing or missing walls, roof or floor, siding that is seriously damaged or missing, fire damage, improper weather protection and waterproofing, a foundation that is structurally faulty, accumulation of interior furniture outside, garbage, trash, junk, hazardous materials, unmaintained pools, or other sources of stagnant water in violation of sanitary codes, inoperable cars, boats or motorcycles, or other inoperable machinery, or other refuse unless otherwise licensed to do so. B, it has been cited for violations as documented by the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, health agent, the chief of police, the fire chief, and/or their designated agents, and said violations have not been corrected. C, because of fire, wind, or other natural disaster, or because of physical deterioration, it no longer, it is no longer habitable as a dwelling or useful for the purposes for which the completed structure was originally intended. So, this is, I said, the first part of the definitions, but it lays out, you know, what exactly we're looking for. I would add, too, that the language taken that defines blighted is from another community's somewhat related bylaw about blighted premises that has been approved by the Attorney General's Office, which has to sign off on bylaw language. So, we want to, rather than reinventing the wheel and risking that the AGO would not approve our language, this meets our stated purpose and desires, it's already been approved, so to me and to Town Council, I believe it makes sense to adopt that language. Mr. Golden, did you have a question?
If that's all right with you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Kevin. I, I actually think it's very smart that you're focusing on the buildings. I think this will go a long way to satisfy some of the concerns that town meeting had. Hopefully, they will recognize that we're not coming after their too-tall grass.
Right.
With this, this bylaw.
Right.
I do have a question under the blighted premises definition.
Sure.
Where it says, in that's, well, it's the second line on our packet. It says, in a separate unit, whether commercial or residential, do we need to state industrial? Or are these not tied to classifications of property? Does commercial include industrial property?
So, I would think it would, well, light industrial is a separate determination from commercial.
Just something to chew on.
Yeah.
If, whether or not you want to include that.
Right.
And then, under both A and C, there's mention of fire. I would advocate to take that out. I would hate to see someone's house burned down, and then suddenly, we're enforcing our new bylaw to lose your house and then to have the town coming after you. And I don't think that we would in that circumstance, but I, I think that we could find ourselves in a situation where perhaps a neighbor wants us to enforce this bylaw based on fire damage structures. I think other parts of this definition could satisfy, in the case of a fire, if something has been fire damaged for years. I think it could satisfy that. I would just remove that for the purposes of showing some compassion to folks who are in that situation. And then the last item I have in, in letter A, under blighted properties, could we add excessive garbage, trash, and junk, and perhaps define what we mean by excessive?
Well, so, I think it's, it's easier to remove language than it is because the AG's office has already approved the language as written, right? If you start, if we started putting in a further definition, we could risk overextending ourselves. And I think partially with the fire damage, but particularly with the trash, I think an element of discretion. If somebody has like one sandwich wrapper outside their house, right, that's, they're not gonna, we're not gonna go after their property. It's gonna be, it's really there for the properties we're thinking of. And particularly, some of the garbage, trash, and junk is not just household stuff. some of the garbage, trash, and junk is not just household stuff or commercial stuff. It's like stuff that's fallen off the structure and is now like trash, junk, debris, stuff like that. Some of these structures have been in various levels of urban decay for extended periods, right? So, on, I think we could remove fire damage if there's a consensus that we wanted to do that. That's easy to remove. There are some negatives because I don't think, you know, if somebody had a, somebody had a fire, obviously, we wouldn't like the next day show up and be like, what's the plan here? There's an element of discretion there, but I can see where you're coming from with that. But I think if we added excessive trash, then you're putting in a judgment call that hasn't been approved by the AGO and maybe, maybe we compromise on that one. Yeah.
Mr. Canty, Mr. Golden, I respectfully disagree with taking the fire damage out. And I'll tell you why. I know of a property down at White Horse Beach that had fire damage. It's still, it's still a blight. And, and it's, this would stop somebody from getting insurance money and not rehabbing the building properly. So, I just think that we should leave that and it works for other towns. And, you know, no disrespect to you, David, but I would leave the fire damage right in there.
Okay.
I just hate would have somebody take the money and not do anything about the property.
Right.
So, anyway, thank you.
Does anyone else have an opinion on fire damage? I mean, I personally am okay with keeping it in, but I'm open to, I mean, this is in the first of multiple hearings, so if we get more feedback later that people are up in arms about the fire damage, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm certainly open to, this is not something, having read through the entirety of the proposal at this point.
Yep.
It's not something that I would vote against because of its inclusion.
Sure.
But I would like to hear more from the community as to whether or not they would agree.
Right, right. And as we said at the beginning last time, it failed spectacularly. So, we want to be cognizant of the fact that we don't want to, again, overextend ourselves and have, even if we can't go after fire, we can still go after a lot of other problematic parcels. That's better than what we have right now to remedy the concerns that we're getting, right? So, that's a consideration as well. All right, let's move forward. So, D, this is still definitions. It is determined by the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer, the health agent at the building, structure, or parcel of land, is in a condition which poses a serious threat to safety, health, and general welfare of the town of Plymouth. Enforcement authority, the director of the special services, or his or her designee, health director, his or her designee, fire chief, his or her designee, police chief, and his or her designee. Nuisance, a failure to satisfy any one or more of the property standards set forth in Section 137-3. An owner is any person who owns, manages, or controls any property and shall be sufficiently identified by the name and address appearing in records of a municipal assessor, who has legal title to any building, structure, or property, or is a morgue geek, or is an agent, trustee, or other person appointed by the courts and vested with possession or control of such building, structure, or property, person, any individual, voluntary association of individuals, or nonprofit organization, business entity, organization, whether incorporated or not, property, any land, building, structure of real property, including any fixtures attached thereto, or any personal property located within the town of Plymouth. Any questions on this section of definitions? Okay. Then, property standards is 137-3. All property, whether occupied or vacant, shall be maintained in a safe and sanitary condition, so as to not cause or contribute to the creation of hazardous premises. All property, whether occupied or vacant, shall be maintained so as to not constitute a blighted premises as defined in Section 137-2. All fences, storage sheds, or other, any element thereof shall be maintained in a structurally sound condition as determined by the enforcement authority. All property with siding and roof covering shall be maintained in a weather resistant and watertight condition as determined by the enforcement authority. Any building or structure sustaining damage due to a fire, natural disaster, or any other incident determined by the enforcement authority to be a nuisance, may cause the nuisance to be removed as provided in Mass. General Law's Chapter 139 at the owner's expense or as provided in Section 137-4. Other determinations made by an enforcement officer and/or his/her designated agents that the building, structure, or parcel of land is in a condition which poses a serious nuisance or serious threat to safety, health, and/or the well-being of the town of Plymouth. Any questions on any of the property standards? Hearing and seeing none. Then, the removal and corrective action, 137-4. It shall be unlawful for the owner of a property in the town of Plymouth to violate any one or number of the property standards contained in 137-3, and any such property in violation may be deemed to be a public nuisance. The enforcement authority shall order the property owner to take corrective action, including but not limited to, removal of the structure or condition causing the violation within 30 days after service of the notice of the violation. Such notice shall be served in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 111, Section 124. The notice shall contain the following information: street address, description of the property, sufficient for identification of the property, a statement that the property has been declared a public nuisance because of the presence of a nuisance on the property, a concise description of the conditions on the property that has led to the determination that the property is a public nuisance, a statement of the corrective action required, that the nuisance shall be removed from the property within 30 days from service of the notice, and if the owner fails to remove the nuisance within the timeframe specified, that the owner will be in violation of this bylaw and subject to penalties described therein. Any questions on 137-4, removal of nuisance slash corrective action? Hearing and seeing none, we will move forward. So, then, continued 137, this is, if the owner fails to take corrective action within the timeframe provided, the enforcement authority may undertake corrective action and repairs. When in his or her judgment, a failure to make the necessary repairs or corrective action will endanger the health, welfare, or public safety. The town may seek a court-appointed receiver to manage the property and bring said property into compliance with all applicable statutes, regulations, and codes. Notice of the intention of the town to make such repairs or other corrective actions shall be served on the owner by certified mail, by service in hand by a person duly authorized to do such. When the repairs are made or other corrective actions are taken by the town of Plymouth, the cost of such repairs shall constitute a debt in favor of the town against the owner of the repaired building or structure. If the owner fails, neglects, or refuses to pay the town the amount of the debt within 30 days of the receipt of the notice of the debt, the town may place a lien on the property for such debt and/or may initiate a civil action against the owner in a court of competent jurisdiction to recover the debt. Any questions on that language? Hearing and seeing none. And then violations. So, this one, this one is incomplete, but I did provide to members of the board and members of the audience in attendance, a copy of what the violations were last time. 137-5 listed fines, first violation $50, second $100, third $200, fourth in each subsequent $300. So, I don't think the fine amounts would change per se, but the thing that we're waiting on is we want, if an appeals, one of the questions that came up before was how do I appeal this? What happens if I appeal this? And we would like language in there that outlines how you appeal it. You can appeal it under Massachusetts General Law, but people don't know how to do that and this will put it in there. And then, we would like the language to reflect that if you're in an appeal process, that you're not accumulating additional violations while you're appealing it because that's not really fair. If you're going, if you're executing your legal right, that you would toll the accumulation of additional violations until that has played out, and then, once your appeal is exhausted, then you're open up again to the violations as outlined in the bylaw.
Mr. Canty, I got a question on, a lot of this language we've taken from other towns and how they do this bylaw, and I think that's a great way to do it. How do their fines work, the fines in other towns work? And a $50 fine for a building, not to pick on Burts, but a building that size is not really a lot of money.
Right.
So, I don't know if we should structure the fine by the square footage of the blight. I don't know if that would work.
So, I believe the fines are capped by Mass. General Law.
Okay.
So, there's only, but the fines are really a mechanism to do the other things if they're, that we want to do because we can take the repairs or other corrective action and charge them for that. So, the fines, we're not going to make a lot of money off the fines.
This, I don't think, this is not about making money.
No.
But this is about getting somebody's attention.
Right.
That, you know, the residents don't like looking at this.
Right.
It's a hazard and we want it fixed. And I hope, I hope we don't have to use this.
Right.
I mean, I hope, I hope we never have to use this bylaw. This is not about, I don't like penalizing residential taxpayers or commercial taxpayers. But, you know, we need, we've been talking about a few buildings in this town, full sale, Burts, the building in North Plymouth, that's not a building now, it's the whole Magrond.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's what this whole thing was created for.
Right.
So.
So, I think when we, when we issue the fine to them, we could, we could articulate in the notice or that additional penalties up to and including corrective action by the town could follow if, if it's not followed through upon. Much like if you get in trouble at work or something, you know, they say, you know, if additional issues happen, corrective action up to including termination could happen, something like that, right? So, then, there would be put on notice that, yeah, $50 to start off with is not going to break the bank for most people, although I don't know how much revenue the whole of North Plymouth is bringing in. But, but the attention getting is the further corrective action and the charges that that would entail, that would connect to the property. And that's really what we, we want to do for, with this. But I certainly understand your comments. Any, any other thoughts on violations or any of the prior, prior slides? Any questions of any kind? Okay. Well, so, this is the first. So, we're, we'll come back with some slight tweaks to some of the language that Mr. Golden had suggested. The next presentation, and maybe at the next presentation, now that this has been aired publicly and televised, there'll be some feedback that we get from other folks, Town Meeting members, members of the public, about any concerns they have, anything they wish was in there, anything they wish was not in there, anything like that. So, we're trying to start a dialogue on this so that next time we go to Town Meeting, we're not facing a landslide defeat, but rather consensus victory that we can address some of the problems that we know and have known, have existed in this community for a prolonged period, and we would finally have the mechanism with which to address it.
So, I'd like to thank Attorney McKay and yourself because I think this is very close to, to be ready to present. I think you're in great shape. Even the issue David brought up, I think you should leave that as is. I really do. But, no, I mean, it's just my opinion.
Yep.
It's, so I think we're, you're in great shape with this.
Yep.
You know, when you get that fine structure finished.
Right.
I think you'll be able to present, so great job.
Right, thank you.
Attorney McKay, thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. Well, thank you very much, and we will return at a later time with a more finalized version, and we'll get some feedback then, and then we'll put it on a warrant for the fall, hopefully, and hopefully, we'll be successful in October. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on the public comment? Please make sure the green light's on and identify us all for the record.
Steve Leiden, Vice Chair, Precinct 17. Steve Leiden, Vice Chair, Precinct 17. I'd like to thank the DPW for the great job they've been doing with chip and seal. They did Wareham Road, they've done Long Pond Road, they've done Hedges Pond Road. They've done a great job. I know this is the first coat and they'll be back and it'll even be better when they're done, but they're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice, nice to hear.
Everett Malaguti, I actually wouldn't have come up today until I looked at one of the administrative notes on the agenda tonight, and I just have a question relative to it. So, there was approved for acceptance if granted the $6,000 for a reuse swap shed at the transfer station. The only reason I'm bringing this up is I attend multiple recycling committee meetings in Kingston where they have their own reuse swap shop that actually has been closed due to COVID, but also staffing issues for volunteers. My questions are, and I will also send this forward to the DPW Director as well too, is what is the actual staffing going to be for the swap shop? Is it going to be staff or volunteers? Hours of operation, is there enough room for queuing of cars that are dropping off stuff there? And what's the actual protocols for the actual items that are being dropped off there? Are they going to be in deplorable condition that people just don't want to throw in their trash? Are there going to be conditions that it actually can be reused and stuff like that? And I think it was a little bit of a shocker seeing that. I approve having one. I just want to make sure that they take queues from Kingston and other municipalities that have this to make sure that it's not just going to be an accumulation of trash that we're going to have to spend more money on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Jackie, we have anyone online? No? Okay. Town managers' report, please.
Oh, great. So, I want to start with what Mr. Leiden had mentioned regarding chip sealing. So, as Mr. Leiden mentioned, that the DPW has already started the first phase of the chip sealing process, which is basically, you know, filling in the, the areas that need grading. And as of this coming Monday, the town will begin the final coat of the chip sealing process. And so, we are expecting 17 miles of chip seal to be completed, to be started on this coming Monday. So, again, that's 17 miles. I think the most miles the town has ever paved in one paving season has been 15 miles. So, this year alone, we'll do 17 miles in chip seal. And in addition to that, there are three roads that we will start this week pulverizing. Nick's Rock Road, South Cherry Street, and Eaton Way will all be pulverized this week, and then paving will also begin as well. So, again, as, as presented by the DPW Director in the past, we have a total of 30 miles of roads that'll be completed in this paving season. So, again, a lot of great work happening on the DPW. I want to bring to the board's attention, at our last meeting, Mr. David Gould, the Director of the Department of Energy and the Environment, presented the identification of two piping plover nests located at White Horse Beach. He mentioned in his comments that last year, we had one nest. This year, we doubled that to two nests. And because of these two nests, we were working with fire and police and other public safety agencies to determine what would be the correct course of action as it relates to the July 3rd celebration on White Horse Beach. And at the time, we were suggesting that there would be no bonfire permits issued across White Horse Beach and even in parts of Priscilla Beach, and that we would have strict enforcement around fireworks because of these two nests. I was informed today that one of the nests and the adults associated with the nests are now no longer present, and that is the nest that was located south of the Bartlett Brook. So, because of that, we released a statement to the community early evening that limits the restriction area to the Bartlett Brook north up to full sail. So, that, that stretch of White Horse Beach, the Fire Department will not be issuing bonfire permits, but will allow for bonfires in the other areas of Priscilla Beach and the area on White Horse that is south of Bartlett Brook down to the boat ramp. And so, we'll keep you posted. There is a five-day waiting period. There is a suggestion that possibly this nest may produce eggs again, but given the fact that the adults are nowhere to be found, the likelihood of that happening is, is minimum. So, again, I'll keep the board posted on that one. And then, Brook Road Bridge is now complete. We were just waiting to do the final punch list items today, and the Godrail has been completed as of yesterday. So, we will be releasing, hopefully, in the next day or two, a notice to the community that Brook Road Bridge is reopened for, for traffic. So, again, that was the second bridge that was completed in this construction season. I want to mention that, again, I mentioned last week that the master planning kickoff meeting was to take place last Thursday down at South Middle. It was reported that this, according to the consultants that we've hired for this master planning process, they said in, in their career, this was the most well-attended master planning meeting in any community they've ever worked in. They predict that there are almost 300 folks in attendance at this, at this meeting. So, we thank everyone who's participated early on. We encourage them to continue to participate. This is going to be an 18-month process, so folks who haven't participated, there'll be other opportunities for you to get actively engaged, whether it's through surveys, online surveys, or physically present around the community. And then last, I just wanted to bring to the community's attention, this is more of a a call for action, so as you know, former Selectman Harry Helm chaired the dog park committee. Since his departure, the dog park committee has received multiple resignations. As you know, this committee was actively pursuing a Stanton grant. They had identified a location for a dog park, and then ultimately, the expectation was, once this dog park was built using Opera funds and Stanton grant dollars, that a nonprofit would be created, and this nonprofit would be responsible for the ongoing management and maintenance of the dog park. So I'm asking folks that are interested in dog parks, dog owners who want to see a dog park come to fruition, please reach out to the town manager's Selectment Office if you're interested in serving this committee. We need to reconvene this committee so that we can bring this project to full fruition. So that's all I have for this evening. Penny, any questions?
Any questions for the town manager? Derek, if you could, on, please, on Nyx Rock Road, what are they doing on Nyx Rock Road?
So Nyx Rock Road and South Cherry Street and Eaton Way, they'll be pulverizing the street and getting it prepared for a, a top coat of asphalt.
Okay. On Nyx Rock Road, there's three or four manholes, I'm going to call them manholes.
Okay.
And they're a foot above grade of the road. So when you get on Nyx Rock Road, it's, you know, I only know because I lived there for like forty years, but going around, it's like a minefield. So I hate to see the town go in there and resurface and do whatever else they're doing without fixing those. And it's not a little issue. I mean, you, you really need to drive down and look, so.
Yeah, typically, thank you for the comment. Typically, when they pulverize the road, they go down to the base, so I'm pretty sure the contractor will adjust all of the structures to final grade, but I'll make sure we pass that on to the DPW director so that gets done.
Because as it stands, they're at least twelve inches above grade, so I'm only saying, if they're not fixed, I, I'd like to see you put the brake on until, you know, otherwise you're going to be digging it up again to fix them. And I've been told that they're going to fix, how, how, how deep are they ever? There you go. And he's not, he's not kidding. That's why you go around them. So that's why I, I only ask the question I ask. So, and I do not live on Nyx Rock Road anymore, but I just, you know, I know the road.
That's interesting, okay.
Anyway. Yep. Mr. Canty and Mr. Blitzer.
So just to circle back to the case of the missing plovers. So obviously, when, when David Gould was here last week, he talked about the town's restrictions were designed to keep access to the beach in the long term. Some short-term pain, but for long-term gain, basically. That if we didn't follow the restrictions and the guidelines imposed by the state and the federal government, that more onerous ones would be imposed for longer duration and would limit beach access even further. So I assume I would be correct in encouraging residents to continue to comply with the existing restrictions wherever they may be, regardless of their preference to not be so restricted because the alternative would be more onerous on everyone in, for a longer period of time. Would that be a fair assessment, Mr. Bendizzi?
Yeah, that's absolutely a fair assessment, and I think that we have history to prove that. When the town chose to not be as restrictive on Long Beach, state and federal officials impose severe restrictions, and we still live with those restrictions twenty years later.
Right.
So it's a point well taken.
Right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Blitzer?
So Derek, so we, we're not going to have in one section of the beach between basically a full sail to the Brook. Are we still going to have the same enforcement that we have every year down there?
Yeah, we'll still have the same presence of fire and police personnel like we've always had. The restriction on that, that stretch of White Horse from full sail down to the Brook, we, we are not allowed to have the UTVs there. We will only allow pedestrian traffic, if you will, on that stretch of the beach, but other than that, we will have UTVs that will be used. Bonfires will be allowed on the portion of the beach that is south of the Brook down to the boat ramp. Trying to blink, over at, at Minimum Point Road.
So the, the nest that was near the ramp, near the, the handicap pad or whatever you call it, where the, where the porta-jones are down in south, the south part of the way to this beach, so that nest is still there? I mean, that nest is gone?
That nest is gone, yes, yeah.
So, so you have the presence of road closures, the same as what we do every year?
That's right.
Now, what about beach access in the, between the full sail and the Brook? Are people going to be allowed to go on the beach?
Pedestrians will be allowed to, to, to use that stretch of the beach. Bonfires will be prohibited on that stretch of the beach. UTVs will be prohibited on that, uh, stretch of the beach. Unless there's a public safety emergency, then we'd be allowed.
So will there be enforcement on foot, or how are you going to?
Yeah, so we'll have be patrols on foot.
Okay, good. Good.
Yeah.
And we're going to, we're sending, all the associations are going to be notified of this?
All the associations have already been notified.
Great. Okay, good.
The fire chief has been speaking directly to the associations.
And there's nothing, we're not going to be able to do anything later on? They talked about doing it another month.
No, the, the Volchili's chief contemplated working with David Gould on delaying the July third festivities to a date in August, and it was deemed by public safety personnel that that was probably more risky than to just proceeding with July third.
Right. So everybody just get down to the other end of the beach if they want the, the bonfires and the fireworks? I mean, that's, that's all you can do is encourage that.
Right.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anything on the new business? Mr. Canty?
Uh, so I was contacted by some residents down on South Wareham Road about concerns about traffic volume, traffic speed, and I think some of their concerns would require, some of their concerns were requesting things like stop signs, things that the board could do as road commissioners, but some of their concerns seem to suggest something, solutions that would require perhaps layout changes or gradient changes, something that would require a town meeting article to effectuate. So I said I would bring it up at the meeting to be something that we start looking into, but that there may not be an immediate solution. I know that some of the houses there are quite close to the road surface and are concerned that it's a cut-through for a lot of folks that are traveling at high rates of speed off the highway in, at levels that were not present prior to the development of the area by Red Brook. I think, and some of the traffic is like Red Brook-related trucks, I think septic trucks, but some of it is like highway cut, cutoffs, cut-throughs. So just, I know that some of the residents are very concerned about that and would like that to be on our radar going forward, so this perhaps may be the start of putting that on our radar and seeing what, if anything, we could do to alleviate the concerns that these folks have.
Yeah, I'd ha, I'd be happy to learn more about it, to learn more what their concerns are. I believe our former transportation engineer and now Assistant DPW Director, James Downey, has spent many evenings with the residents of the Red Brook area, so we strongly can re-engage the DPW and learn more about what the most present issues are. I believe it was just not that long ago, the board approved a four-way stop over on Wareham Road.
Right.
So that was controversial, so we were able to get that done.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, I don't want to be in the business of putting up stop signs where, you know, the residents like. I, there's a process for that. It's worked well, and I think we just guided along. I agree that we should, you know, somebody's, residents are asking that we should take a look. However, the second part of that, this is my favorite one, these developers come in, no matter what they're developing, they develop, they take the cash, stuff their pockets, and off they go. And then here we are, later on, the residents coming to this board, to this town, and looking for traffic improvements, and guess what? The taxpayers have to pay for it. This should all be part of the planning process for any development in this town, whether it be sidewalks, road improvements, drainage. You know what, folks? If the developers can't afford it, don't build it, because I think the citizens in this town have about had enough of it anyway, to be, from what I'm hearing. So I just want to put my two cents in for that, and.
Yes.
I see it all over the place. Oh, they can't afford the sidewalk, they can't afford that, and then the people come to this board or to the town meeting reps and ask them to go in and redo this. I agree with it. It should be fixed, but it shouldn't be at the taxpayers' expense. That's my issue with it.
No, I, I agree, and I, and I, in, in terms of your earlier remarks, Mr. Chairman, as well, I did, you know, remind the folks that we're looking for like a stop sign that, the other stop sign at River Runway in Wareham involved a data-based analysis, not just, because otherwise, there's, there's three hundred and seventy-eight.
We'd be putting speed.
We'd be having stop signs everywhere because everybody has that type of problem, but it can't be.
Exactly.
It can't be that type of a solution, but I, I think that, I have been down there at times and nearly been, been struck myself, so I think there are some legitimate concerns there, and as, that should be looked at for what potential further action could happen. But again, data-driven, based on, you know, those criteria that we used at Wareham and South, and River Run, as opposed to just preferential treatment.
It, you know, it's probably not premature to maybe bring these concerns to the planning board and the zoning board of appeals if so need be. I know the zoning board of appeals grants relief, but when these projects are being planned, this is part of the deal. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So as they're going along, and I know they got, they, I've been to so many of these errands where they have a traffic engineer, and they have a this engineer, and they have a that engineer, but you know, I'm going to say today what I said eighteen years ago or so, I haven't seen a traffic study yet that's worked in this town, and that's it. So if the planning board's listening, I guess you can listen to that, but it's not. Look at Long Pond Road, look at the stacking on Route Three, this talk of the convention center, if you all noticed, I haven't said a word until now, because that's going to be the first thing, the traffic, the traffic coming down the water street or wherever it might be. So we as planners, road commissioners, whatever you want to call it, these are all the things we have to work with, and we have to work with the planning board and the planning department to handle what's going on. And, you know, we got to dig in a little.
I agree.
Okay. Mr. Gold, Mr. Blitzer there, Mr. Golden? I'm just watching the motions here.
I have a few things, but old business bylaws do work. I was talking to the neighbors out here about the garage. It's been great. They said it's, the bylaws working, the notoriety from, from that, it's, it's been very quiet, and they, they want to thank the board and the town manager for, for getting this thing, down in the chief of police, excuse me, of getting it done. So the bylaws do work. I haven't heard any complaints down in the parking lots. I'm not sure if the town, so I, I think it's, everybody's very happy with that, so they, they wanted to thank everybody. I, I drove by, I was down at White Horse today, happened to drive through, and I saw speaking of James Downey, he was down there with Patrick Farah from Conservation, and they, they went down to address the issue that I got, I got a complaint, not a complaint, excuse me, I got a concern from somebody, one of the association presidents down there, that they got a lot of water coming through the storm drain, and people, they said it looked like, and I hate using the word cessible, but it looked, it was water that, that was pooling, and they, they went down, and it was gone, but they assured me it was not, there's no sewage going on that beach, and anybody listening, it was, it was runoff from the streets, and, and they know about it, and they, they were taking a look at that, and they might have some ideas for that property to maybe improve the storm drainage, but that, that'll come at another time, that issue. Last thing I wanted to talk about, I just draw a blank. David, you go ahead. I'll figure out what I wanted to say, but one more thing I wanted to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Blitzer, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items. Derek, thank you for your update. I know that, just going back to the planning for the July third holiday, I sat on the Manmade Village Steering Committee prior to joining the board, and I know that they've done a lot of work to help get the info out to community members, so I think it'd be great if we could engage them, get them involved in the conversation so that they can help spread the word as well.
Sure.
And then my other item is that this has been a tough week for the community, for folks who I'm sure are aware, we lost two community members this week, and I think it would be nice for the board to offer their sympathy to the families of Rodney Ravello and Jaden Andrews, and if you're okay with it, Mr. Chairman, engage in a moment of silence.
Absolutely. This time I'd like to have a moment of silence. Thank you. If I may jolly them.
Sure, yeah, great, yeah.
Just to touch on that, the Ravello family and the Andrews family, which is two of a rough week for this community, and once again, I'll say the community came together like it always does and stepped up to the plate and very proud to be a leader in this community. I spoke with the Andrews family on Saturday morning, remember? I'm not going to go into details, but we put it out there for both the families on behalf of the town of Plymouth, and we helped any way we could. And I'd be remiss right now, and I, you know, I touched on this a couple weeks ago, and I, I want to say it again, and sincerely, I sent memos to both chiefs to pass on to the departments. I know they've had a rough week, and that's before the week even ended, and there was some more tragedy, and that we appreciate them, not just as, as a board, but as a community for what they see and what they do, and you know, sometimes just a thank you and, and to be acknowledged, and I want to say thank you to all our public safety and anybody else, the citizens, everybody, proud to live in Plymouth, I wouldn't live anywhere else. I love this town. Thank you.
My senior moments over, I, I wanted to speak about, and Attorney McKay was there with me, we had a license, a meeting of all, all our license holders, alcohol license holders, that went very well. Lisa Johnson set that meeting up, she did a great job doing that. The library was packed, and it's not easy to get a hundred-plus bar restaurant folks in a room together, especially this time of year, it's, everybody's real busy. But it was an important meeting, and we talked about the importance of, of controlling what goes on inside and outside of your restaurants. And we, the ABC started off, the chairman was there, she spoke, the deputy, I mean, the executive director and his deputy was there, his, his attorney counsel for the ABC was there, we had the label lawyer was there for the feds, and they all gave presentations on the regulations and the responsibilities of holding these licenses. They talked about everything from, from liquor liability to, they had, they talked about child labor and the, and the labor laws and the penalties that go with it, and it was really, it covered a lot of ground for the, for all the license holders. I talked to several afterwards, the next couple days, and they said it was very informative. People learned things that they, they did, that they didn't know, and these are some longtime operators that learned something, that, that's something I think if we don't do it every year, we should do, do it every couple of years. And the main reason we brought this is we've had some incidents in the town, and the new, the, the new newspaper sometimes sensationalizes things and, and talked about, there was violence in the downtown that was, there was an article, and that really concerned not my, not only myself, but a lot of the business owners in the downtown. of the business owners in the downtown. So we got everybody together to explain what, that there could be ramifications if there's issues. The police, the chief will be bringing, if there's incidents, it's going to be brought to the attention of the board. We are the licensing board for the town of Plymouth. So hopefully, everybody gets it and everybody operates properly, and if there's a problem, they take care of that problem, because sometimes you can't stop, you know, you can't stop situations, but it's what you do afterwards that is really important. So, anyway, it was a great meeting, it's something that we should do, if not every year, at least every two years, and it's mandatory too. So, anyway, I just wanted to report about that, it was a very productive day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything on the letters? Old business? The next meeting will be on July 9th. The board wants to wish the community a happy safe Fourth, and please, everybody be behave, and let's have a quiet Fourth if it's possible. We don't need any more tragedies, we've had our share of those in the last couple of weeks, so that's all that's coming from. And I'd be remiss to say, before I take a motion to adjourn, that we lost a longtime employee, I believe in the airport division, Mr. Swift, who's been with the community many years, I want to say over 25. So our thoughts and prayers go out to him as well, and his family. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We'll see you on July 9th. Have a good week.